Okay. I'd like to call on Chief Logan to lead us in and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I cleverly did you see the flag of the United States of America and consider it public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here this evening. Barbara Lyons could not make it this evening. She's in Tampa, Florida with her father who just got out of surgery and we respect that and hope all is well there. So we'll have go on with our meeting this evening and I guess the first thing we will do is we were just in executive session and we just interviewed a couple candidates for one of our board positions and we'll talk about that further in the evening as far as that goes. And I'd like to call on Stu Everson from the YMCA to make a presentation to us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't have a very large presentation, but I will say that this year is the bicentennial, 200 years of Doylestown becoming the county seat of Bucks County. So we are planning to have a week-long celebration in commemoration of that event which will kick off at Memorial Day with the Memorial Day Parade. That will be the 28th of May and it will continue that entire week until Saturday, June the 2nd, when we're planning to have a community picnic and fireworks. So just by way of catching everybody up and those people who may be interested here in the audience, in 1912, there was a centennial celebration of this same event and they had a commemorative book which we happen to have. I should mention by way of introduction that I'm the president of the Doylestown Historical Society and I'm also the co-chairman of the bicentennial committee along with Lynn Goldman who should be here and probably will be momentarily. But anyway, in 1912, there was a commemoration book put out and it's extremely neat. So we're going to kind of copy that this year and our book will look like this. It's actually right now being published and we're expecting to see the first proofs tomorrow as a matter of fact. So that's what will wind up with the legacy of this event. In between times, we now have a committee of approximately 40 members, volunteers, and many of these committee heads have subcommittee people of their own. We are planning between 25 and 30 different events to take place during that week, ranging from a 100-inning softball game to antique car show. So rather than give you all of these details, which by the way are available on our website, DoylestownBicentennial.org, what I'd like to do is talk about the events that will take place in the township rather than in the borough. There are two major events taking place in the township. One is the picnic that I mentioned that will be on the grounds of the YMCA Saturday, June the 2nd, and that will kick off at about 3:00 in the afternoon and go to, I'm not sure, but I think it's 6:00 in the evening. Fireworks begin when it gets dark, which we anticipate will be approximately 8:30, quarter to 9:00. And that's going to be about a 20-minute show. So that will take place in the township. The other major event will take place in the township is on Memorial Day itself immediately following the Memorial Day Parade, there'll be an antique car show on the grounds of Font Hill. We expect about 100 antique cars along with all the trimmings. There'll be, you know, musical acts and Henry Mercer prancing around the grounds and lots of festivities.
Spirit, that is.
Spirit. We actually have an actor. His name is Jamie Bradley. He may be familiar to some of you. Jamie Bradley would like to be the Benjamin Franklin of Doylestown. You know, the guy who parades around dressed up like Benjamin Franklin in town. I told you she'd be here.
That is Lynn Goldman, by the way, who has disappeared.
But Jamie Bradley is an actor for Town and Country Players in Buckingham and he likes to dress up as Henry Mercer and runs around with his dog Rollo. And so we have engaged Jamie to play a fairly significant role during that week. He'll be around town taking pictures, doing good stuff, and will be featured in actually one of the videos that we're doing here. So should be a lot of fun. It's also, I should mention, the centennial of Font Hill, of Henry Mercer moving into Font Hill. So the event that we have at Font Hill will be together with the people at Mercer Museum Font Hill to do that. So that's kind of like what we have. Our problem, if you can call it that, is money, like everybody's problem. This is a community-driven volunteer event. Our goal is to have all of these events free to the public.
We like to call it organic.
We like to call it.
We're trying to make that sound really nice.
When I look that word up, I'll explain what it means.
What we try to do is through our work is not charge.
Would you like to come up by the microphone?
Yeah.
Sorry. What we tried to do is have it all volunteers. So when Stu and I went about this, you know, we weren't, we both committed to try to collect as much money as we could without imposing on independent people and, you know, going knocking on doors and asking people to give more money. And so we went around and we asked people to give us in-kind service. So Thompson Organization was very generous and they said, yeah, we'll do the car show. And they're not, they've donated some money that makes the car show possible. So there's no charge and the car show is going to have 100 antique cars and anybody who's doing it is doing it for free. And then we went about and we asked the Beans to help us with this book. And the Beans organization said, yeah, we'll help you in kind. They gave us their advertising group. They've asked us for nothing. Like so, we're developing this book and we've had no funding necessary so far for the book. And what we're trying to do is just charge the same amount of book that it's costing us to produce that. I don't know if you were able to say that or not.
Not as well as you.
But, and then for the family picnic, we've asked for no money so far for the family picnic, although we're running into this band, Dr. Dog, that they want to have. So we are going to need some money for that. But so the Y has said, you know, we're into it too. We don't want any money. We'll lend you our facilities. We're going to work with you with people on our committees. We're going to ask for no money either. And the only, you know, we've come to a couple of spots where we need some money. And, you know, one is the showmobile and we recognize the cost unfortunately. One of the days that we need it happens to be a holiday, so we recognize that there's some workers that we need that are holiday expense. So we have to deal with that. We have to also deal with the other day, which is the family picnic and the necessity of having some policeman cross people from the family picnic across 202 to get to the fireworks so they're safe. And we thought maybe we could do that with volunteers because we put out a web blast and asked for volunteers and we got like, you know, 15 people volunteering to help because they like this whole concept of just doing it ourselves without costing money. And so we've run into the obstacle of know that we need people who really know what they're doing crossing the street. So there's two areas where we're asking the township's help and that would be the showmobile and the workers that come with it, which require guys to set it up. I don't know, apparently you need someone with the showmobile all day. So that requires someone there all day. And then also for the car show, which is again a free event, and somebody there with the showmobile all day because we're having all the kids choirs from the schools come and the Baptist church is coming and some other choir from some other churches coming. So those are the things we're asking for. And believe it or not, I mean, I recognize the situation that the board is in and I recognize there's a thousand causes everybody has that are fantastic causes. But in this case, we're just saying, we've asked, you know, really, we're not asking for money from anybody. We're just trying to do this internally, organically, letting it bubble up and make it so it's an event that we could all be proud of and, you know, appreciative of anything you can do to help us out in our quest for a free event.
I do have just a couple of things to add to that. And just to tell you the extent of the outpouring of support that we have been getting, you know, in the borough of Doylestown, they have not allowed a banner to be strung across Main Street or State Street in I don't know how many years, 30 maybe. But they have made an exception in this case and we got approval not only from the borough to string our banner across Main Street, but we also now just got approval from PennDOT to do that as well. So there's a significant amount of red tape involved in getting this done and we got it done without any problem at all. And of course, the borough is certainly contributing their services as well.
Yeah. Did you also mention that the airport is going to do a big event? Then they're going to have a big event that's going to be free and they're feeding people?
Free airplane rides.
Free airplane rides, free food. The Font Hill, the castle is opening up, the castle. There's going to be lectures all over town. In fact, I wrote my brother-in-law to doing a Roosevelt lecture, easy one for Bob, a no-brainer. But I mean, you know, there's going to be things all over that people are not, you know, are just doing because they're community members.
One other event I'd like to tell you about because it involves an invitation to all of you, and that is one day, as they did in 1912, they designated one day as Military Appreciation Day. So we're going to do the same thing. And for that, that means for us, on Wednesday, I think it's May the 30th, at noon at the courthouse outdoors, we will have Military Appreciation Day. The primary theme will be to honor the returning veterans from Iraq and Afghanistan. So we have the VFW involved taking the leadership to assemble and identify an appropriate gift to these veterans. But in addition to that, we will also have ceremonially at that event, a number of youngsters who are just entering military service. And we have enlisted the services of Admiral Steve Chadwick, who may be known to some of you as a local resident, retired admiral, former commandant of the Naval Academy, who will be doing the enlistment oath to these youngsters. We'll have, you know, a color guard and a singer, you know, I mean, it's going to be a really nice event.
Yeah.
It'll be approximately an hour and a quarter. We have invited the lieutenant governor of the state and I'm told that he will be with us, Jim Colley. I have not gotten that confirmed yet. And one of the county commissioners will also speak just for a few minutes. So Marguerite Quinn has introduced or is about to introduce a bill in the state House of Representatives to identify this bicentennial as an official event. The bottom line of that will be a proclamation which she will present at that time as well. So we're of course inviting Mr. Fitzpatrick and Senator McElhenney. And I'd certainly like at this time to formally invite all of you to this event. We're not asking for speakers, but certainly your presence at that event would be an honor to us if you can, you can attend.
You know, there's also two things that are happening in the township. You can say this is all borough event, but it isn't. In the township we're doing at the Aldi Mansion, we're doing, which is township, isn't it?
200 years of fashion.
I was thinking, is that Buckingham? No, that's township. 200 years of fashion that a woman has volunteered to do a fashion show with 200 years of fashion, using people in the community and, you know, doing in the office. And then also the Doylestown Shopping Center is doing on Friday night, they're doing a pet parade of fashion, 200 years of fashion on dogs or something like that. I mean, so the township, it's not all just in the borough. We are reaching out. It's, you know, it's extending itself to wherever anybody's volunteering to do something during that week. And the shopping center came up big as well as the mansion.
Actually, there is one other event that will take place at Highland Farm, Oscar Hammerstein's house, where a woman who has written a book about Oscar Hammerstein will impersonate Anna from The King and I and do her business there. It's Lunch with Oscar and Anna. I didn't mention this because we have had a couple of meetings with Chief Logan and Stephanie and others from the township mentioning all of this, and we have been told that we don't need permits for these other side, I call them side events, but they're not really side events. So I haven't mentioned that because we're not asking for any help from the township for those events, but we are asking and do need your help for these two major events. Yes, sir? Oh, I'm done.
I didn't want to cut you off because you were making a great presentation.
We've gotten this field down. We keep going everywhere.
I lie.
There's so much, there's so much here happening, when you, all the things that you're preparing to do. It's mind-boggling to think that a group like yourself can put this all together, but I know you can because I've seen you do it before. But you're asking us for a waiver for the cost of our showmobile and things of this nature, and I don't know what the board would consider with this. Rick, what do you think in regards to, you're talking, for instance, a security deposit which would be returned if everything is okay with the showmobile.
We're happy to, we're happy to give you a security deposit because we know we'll return it and get the security deposit.
Well, that's it. But I don't know, when we start talking with that, we have to have our personnel there with it. And we're talking overtime, et cetera, et cetera, and that could be a budget buster for us at this point.
Well, we're asking for everything to be donated, but as I mentioned in the letter that I have written to you, we certainly understand the economic realities of the time and if it's not possible to do that, we would ask for you to charge us or not to charge us for anything that is not out-of-pocket expenses. If you have to pay somebody to accompany a showmobile and he's there and he requires pay or overtime pay for chief, for police, we understand that. We don't like it, but we understand that, same as you. So whatever you decide, of course, we will abide by.
And, you know, I think also, we're, so we recognize that and we're comfortable with that, the other con cost of somebody for the showmobile. We're wondering if the police, since it's a short requirement of crossing the road, if it's an hour to cross people, is a guy on duty or are you bringing someone in extra or can we just use someone who's on duty perhaps, a policeman that's out there already on the beat to help people cross the road? So I think like when Stu and I were talking about this and we're trying to be fair because we said, God, like, you know, there's a thousand different good causes, that we understand that we would have to pay for the showmobile guys, like, because we think, okay, that's our burden, but we are asking, could you pay for, you know, do we have to pay for the showmobile since it's something that you already have that we'll pay for the guys to bring it there, we'll pay for the guys to stay there, we'll pay for the guys to bring it back, but can we borrow the showmobile since it's your people, your public, your bosses or technically, you know, coming to see the event? It's not limited to Doylestown Borough residents. And so that we ask, and again, on the policeman's, on the police duty, we're just asking if someone is on duty, is it fair to say, can you just come over for an hour since the masses are going to be there to be able to cross the road and help people get across? And then perhaps at the end of the fireworks, which is only a 20-minute presentation, just help traffic patterns?
That decision would have to be borrowed by the chief here because he's responsible for that and I don't know how many people will be crossing a busy highway like that is if you're going from one side of the street and over to the, say, the hospital on the other side, which is.
In the dark.
If you had, I don't know, I'm going to say 500 people crossing, it's dark out and you might need.
Yeah, well, I think that we've tried to work that out.
Quite a few.
We're not trying to cut any corners.
Yeah, well, I understand.
Safety is.
Safety is, yeah, exactly.
So whatever the experts say we have to do is what we're going to do.
I'll turn that over to you, Chief Logan.
If it, the meetings that I attended at the YMCA with Stephanie there, we discussed, I think there was a minimum amount of time that you had requested, and I indicated at the last meeting that if we were only out there two hours, we would only charge you two hours. I think at right at this point, they asked for four hours.
That's correct.
And, you know, I said, if we're only out there two hours, we would only charge you two hours. The issue I have with trying to use our existing manpower on the street is, at this point, with the number of people that could be drawn to the area and the other things that would be going out, I would be very hard-pressed to guarantee that those officers would be available at that any given time to cross the street when those pedestrians are crossing. So I really can't allocate my manpower that's on the street for this extra detail.
That makes sense.
I mean, it's a good project and there's nobody near as passionate as Lynn in anything she gets a hold of. And yes, there's a butt coming. So I'll get right to that. I have a conflict of spending any township dollars for this event. The security deposit, sure, we can work something out with that. That's just a matter of back and forth. But we have cost centers also and we have costs that we have to take care of and to rob from Peter to pay Paul is not the way to go. So that's my opinion right now. It's a couple thousand dollars. This isn't, you know, a couple hundred dollars. We're talking thousands of dollars and that hits me, hits our residents in the pocket.
How do you feel about the showmobile though? The cost of the showmobile?
I, I mean, the reason we charge that much for the showmobile is because in that are all the other things, the maintenance, to have a personnel check it out, to get permits. And so there's a lot more into it, it's just not the couple hours that you're going to use it. There's a lot more goes into a price, just like when you price anything in any business. It's just not what you paid for that item today. You've got overhead costs and staff and et cetera in it.
Well, we understand there's certainly, you know, at least two arguments on each side for what we're asking for. As Lynn mentioned, we're doing this for the benefit of the residents of the township as well as the borough. It's a once every 100 years event. The borough has made several exemptions or exceptions because of the breadth of the event and, you know, things like allowing us to string a banner across Main Street. So we understand that it's not only Doylestown Township that's burdened by financials, it's everybody. And as Lynn mentioned, people have been giving. I mean, the outpouring of support from the community for this project has been pretty good. This book, that will be the living legacy of this event, in my opinion, and I've seen publications come out of Doylestown Historical Society, this will, this will far exceed anything we've done at the Historical Society. This will be a legacy for this township and this borough, this area. This is, this is going to last a long time. And, you know, we're asking that it be properly respected and supported by the municipalities involved.
And don't misunderstand me, we support it and we're 100%, at least I, I'll speak for myself, 100% behind it. But the, yeah, how about, it seems like there's always some middle ground. Maybe we could table it today, get our heads back together again with the chief understood, what you understood, what Stephanie understood, refine it, come up with some kind of a finer refinement of the least of the couples of thousands of dollars that we were given. If we can refine that, table it today and revisit it, I would be in favor of that.
Fair enough. And, you know, I'm sure Lynn.
Yeah, you have access to us both.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think you understand the issue is, if all costs aside, if certainly four hours of police work has to be paid for, we're hearing your dilemma. If they labor to bring the showmobile to us and to have it staffed, we hear your dilemma. But since the showmobile is being charged a thousand dollars, is a lot of money to take something that is technically ours who's getting this show, that's to me like a tough one to like give into because for that, honestly, it's like, we'll pay for everything, but give us, you know, you say you're 100% for it and I appreciate that and I know you and I know you are and all that stuff. It has nothing to do with that. But then I say in the back of my head, but you can't be because all we're asking for is like a free showmobile and it's your people. And so.
It's our residents' people. They're not my people. The residents are paying them, they're paying the benefits.
It's your bosses.
You know all that.
Yeah, so I appreciate what you're saying and you appreciate what I'm saying and but I think that it comes down to, you know, the deal breaker will be like this showmobile because we need, we need the showmobile. And I just feel like if, that's one of those things that would be unfair to ask us to pay for.
Ryan, would you like to answer?
Yeah, I did, I mean, I think that there's, again, we got to go back and I think the best thing to do is to table it for tonight, but I think there definitely is a happy medium.
Yeah.
And I think we should all also take into consideration on your end that this isn't a 5K run for a charity that's asking us for money. This is an event celebrating this town. So, I mean, I understand that too and I, and you know, I certainly will take that into consideration when we, we look back at these, these numbers.
And everything is fair game. I appreciate what you say, whatever the results, all square in the morning and I appreciate, just get your heads together, whatever the result is, we still, I'll meet you at the Zen Den for coffee. It's fine.
I think you see that we're all certainly would like to help you the best we can. And I think it is fair that we do table it. And I saw a hand in the audience who'd like to say something.
I'm from the 15 Wilkshire Road. When you're looking for money, and I've been involved in a lot of things for money and everything else, I think what you need to do is let this known to the business people in the area. And I think that they would come up with more than enough money to cover your costs. Now, you might be getting some money from a couple of individual places, you mentioned Beans and a couple of other places, but I personally believe that enough people with businesses in the area would underwrite whatever that cost would be. That's my opinion.
Would you like to be our fundraiser?
No, wait, no, wait. Could I say except I'm overloaded with about eight people that are very sick or we take it on tomorrow? I really need it.
Well, if I may address that, you know, we certainly have gone out to the business community a lot. We're working with the Merchants Association. We've made strong approaches to the people who are making money from this town by way of building the new Justice Center and the new parking lot, and they have given us money. But, you know, it's not anywhere near what they, what we expected that they.
And we don't, we don't need a lot, but we need a little.
Could I ask, what's the amount you're looking at?
Actually.
No, no, I mean dollars or cents, not.
Well, we've been back and forth and as Chief mentioned, you know, we asked for so many hours that.
No, I don't want hours, I want money.
Well, hours relate to money in terms of.
I'm talking about, are you talking about a thousand dollars?
It's about, it's about $5,200. $5,200.
About $5,200 and.
If you, if you save a thousand, the showmobile was a thousand?
It's a thousand, but it's per rental and if we, if the board was willing, because that's a security deposit, but it is a hundred dollars an hour to rent the showmobile. And so for the two events, that's a total of $1,200.
Okay, but I mean, the total amount you're looking at is $5,200. I would say the people in the community, the businesses would definitely support that.
Yeah, Joe. Yeah. Joe, P.
Joe, pardon us all, but instead of using the police, why not use fire police? They're, they're volunteers, they're trained in traffic control and crowd control.
Well, that's. They still pay, they still get paid though, Joe.
They get?
They still get paid.
Not the ones I've dealt with.
No, the ones we dealt with do get paid.
Well, I will put that out there.
Well, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, this event, this idea was floated around in one or two of the meetings that we've had and there was valid reasons for not having volunteers do that because.
Fire police are capable of doing the task. However, they are now paid for anything that occurs in Doylestown Township or Doylestown Borough.
So you're still going to have the cost.
Yeah. If you can get them to volunteer, I'd be happy to have them do it. That's an alternative.
I mean, we will try that. We're in contact. The firemen are also doing a big antique fire. I mean, we will try that, we're in contact, the firemen are also doing a big anti-fire display, uh, the day of the picnic, so they're aware this is going on, and, you know, I will run it by them and see if we can get any volunteers.
I'm gonna call for a motion to table this, if, if, what would I...
I'll, I'll second that. Oh, I'll call, I'll, I'll call for the motion to table this until we take a better look at that.
I'll second.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we have a three and O, aye, so we'll table it, we'll get back to you and take it from that point.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Before I sit down, I was actually here this morning...
One, you're drawing a snatch to feed me jaws of victory if you keep talking.
No, 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 this is something else. This is, uh, this is from, I was here this morning for the Bike and Hike Committee, and Dr. Cody had died, who was an original member of our Bike and Hike Committee, and her family would like to buy benches, and we'd like to have a dedication ceremony in front of Kutz for the work Dr. Cody did on the Bike and Hike Committee. And Stephanie told me today I should ask the board for a waiver, because normally when someone dies, before you can name a trail after them, you need a year. And her family is, um, you know, anxious to get benches up and do some work on the trail in front of Kutz, so I'd like to ask, uh, maybe you could table this one too, but just, it's out there, to, to have a waiver for Dr. Corinne Cody for all the work she did on the bike hike trail, that we could dedicate the path within the year.
Let's get back to you on that after we have a, our legal bagel, and I'll discuss what you have to do.
I'm gonna hear my speaker's发言 a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is public comment, is there any public comment? Seeing nobody, uh, we'll move right on then, thank you. Announcements, the next Board of Supervisors meeting will be held on Tuesday, April the 5th, 2012 here, and the annual Doylestown Township Golf outing will be held on June the 4th, 2012 at Doylestown Country Club. So if anybody likes to play golf, please, uh, see us, and we'd be glad to make arrangements that, uh, you can participate in our golf outing. So we'll look forward to seeing everybody here. Okay, moving on, minute approval for March the 6th, 2012?
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, March 6th Board Supervisors minutes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it. Okay, next is, um, correspondence, do we have any correspondence?
Uh, we have no correspondence, this evening.
No correspondence tonight. Next, we have, uh, reports from our solicitor.
The only thing I wanted to add was, in addition to your comments about interviews of persons for a committee, we also had a brief discussion about the police contract, no action will be taken tonight, but we did discuss that briefly as well, and I have no comment.
Okay, fine. Chief?
Have nothing.
Have nothing, we're moving quickly. Township engineer?
Nothing.
Wow, we're getting by easy here, aren't we? Manager?
Um, I just have one thing, and that is the, um, 202 Parkway Task Force, and the Bike Hike Committee has been working, uh, to, uh, plan the, quote, "Party on the Parkway." The actual opening of the Parkway is probably not gonna take place till about Halloween or early November, but we are working towards having an event September 16th, that's a Sunday, um, with a rain date of the 23rd. The event, uh, would be two parts, first, there'd be a Gran Torino, um, bike ride, family-oriented, that Linda Plank from Doylestown Hospital is willing to coordinate, and that would, uh, leave from the Del Valle Farm Market, go to about Horsham Road and back. Around nine o'clock or so, we would be at the, um, Park and Ride Lot, which is, um, at New Britton Road, uh, we would have a variety of tents for Legislative, Del Valle, Pendot, College, um, the hospital, and some of our boards and commissions would be there as well, providing information to the public, giveaways and, uh, refreshments. Also, um, we're intending to do a lot of fundraising related to this, um, because there will be police services, uh, required, and so we're looking for sponsorship opportunities, um, but there is two things that we need to do this evening, I need the board's direction on. First is the, um, parade slash race permit, to be able to use, uh, Pendot's, uh, roadway, which would be the Parkway, and this will be a wonderful opportunity for people to actually get on the Parkway before it's open and see what it looks like. Uh, the second one is that, this was always a dream of Walt Berry's, um, as he served as the board's liaison to the, um, Parkway, uh, Task Force, that we would host some sort of an event to promote the Parkway and the trail associated with it, something he was very proud of, um, that got incorporated. And there's going to be a kiosk that, uh, Pendot is placing at the Park and Ride Lot on New Britton Road, and they are allowing a plaque to be placed there in, um, sort of memory of Walt, and hopefully re-dedicating that Park and Ride Lot as the Walt Berry, um, Trailhead. And so I have the draft wording that Dick and I have worked on, and just want consensus from the board at this point to be able to move forward with the permit application to Pendot, as well as the wording for the plaque at the Trailhead.
Do we have a motion to...
I'll, I'll make a motion to move forward with, with all of this.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three and O.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, well, that was not bad. Next, we have, uh, our supervisors, Ryan, do you have anything to add?
Uh, nothing for me tonight, uh, just, well, like to welcome the new chief to, uh, his first sitting meeting, so glad to have you up here. That's it.
Well, I guess I better welcome him too, otherwise, uh, but I did have another thing, uh, we did interview two excellent candidates, and, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, appoint Stan Duray as auditor, and Alfred Hopkins as a member of the E A, Environmental Advisory Commission, our EAC Committee.
I'll second that.
Good, we have a second. All in favor of said motion, say a la...
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, three and O. Okay, um, I guess that leaves me, I just wanna wish everybody is certainly healthy and long enjoying spring, today is the first day of spring, and I think that is, I think we've been in spring for now for, uh, several months, but, uh, we won't brag about it, 'cause we could wake up tomorrow and have a blizzard or something, but I have to say that has been not only great for our health, but, uh, our budget has certainly been helped by not having to plow snow at triple time, or salt, or whatever, and, uh, it's great to see, I hope we have many more, I hope this is just the first winter of many to come, so, thank you, and, uh, we will move on. Next, we have a, a public hearing.
If I may, uh, before you tonight is a, is an ordinance which has been duly advertised in the law library and the intelligence, or the effect of which, if adopted, would be to, uh, designate that the police employees will contribute 5% of their compensation to their pension, which is consistent with the arbitrator's decision, also permit them to make those contributions with before tax dollars. So, uh, at this point, you need to conduct a public hearing, and appropriate thing to do would be to move to approve, and then have your public hearing before you take a vote.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to approve?
I'll, I'll move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, now, are there any, uh, comments in the audience to this presentation? Nobody has anything to wanna add? Um, so we've had our public hearing, and, uh, I will call for the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, three and O. It's passed. Okay. Now, we move on to, uh, new business, Keely Avenue, I'll turn this over to Stephanie, and she can...
Yes, we've had a request from New Britton Borough to, they've been working on a, uh, traffic calming for Keely Avenue, uh, where they are going to be replacing some of the signage and also putting in some speed humps along there. Um, my recommendation would be that our traffic engineer is reviewing this, and any comments that he has on the signage be shared with the, um, uh, New Britton Borough, and that the solicitor, um, help prepare an agreement similar to the one that we had with Doylestown Borough, when they, we shared that road with them on Court Street, and they put the, um, speed humps on, uh, that road as well, and it might be helpful to have a similar agreement with New Britton Borough.
Okay, we have to do that, I guess, before we make a motion to adopt this?
I guess it's just informational at this point, right?
Passing it along, yeah. Okay, uh, you all agree with...
Yeah, if you're looking for consensus, I'm in agreement, and then Jeff can work on a consent agreement next.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, moving right along. Um, next we have, um, zoning hearing board, Sandy Ridge Road, a special exception?
This is for an in-law suite, and I would recommend that we leave this matter to the zoning hearing board.
I would agree.
I make a motion, we leave it to the zoning hearing board?
We, we, just the consensus.
Then I consent.
Yeah, okay.
Agreed.
Everybody consents, very good. Next, we have, something that's very interesting, is a Girl Scout Gold Award, and this is something because the Girl Scouts are celebrating their 100th anniversary of being, uh, a great asset to the United States of America 100 years ago, and this young lady is, is, um, up for, it's equivalent to what an Eagle Scout would be, and the Girl Scouts never really had anything like this, but now, today, they have, um, come up with something, uh, which is called the, uh, Girl Scout Gold Award, and, uh, her name is Jessica Mulroy, and, uh, I'd open it for a motion to approve, to, to give her a proclamation, to congratulate her on this position.
I will make that motion to approve, Jessica.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of said motion?
Aye.
Aye, three and O. And next, we have a Boy Scout proclamation, Eagle Scout, I should say, or a Anthony Stephen Colonna, Troop Six, and we have a proclamation for him to present, and I will make the, well, I'll leave that to someone else to make the motion, I'm, so you used to make it.
I'll make a motion for the Eagle Scout proclamation for Anthony.
And I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, three and O. Okay. Next, we have a, uh, a letter of agreement to Doylestown Township Police Department for Bucks County Fish and Game, uh, would the chief like to talk to this?
The gist of this is, we've been using the Bucks County Chiefs of Police Association up in Bedminster for the last several years, um, that range up in Bedminster is becoming overused and very difficult to book times, uh, we've actually had to, uh, shave some of our training down, we'd like to get back, uh, we approached Bucks County Fish and Game, and they were cordial enough to allow us, they will allow us to use the range four days per year, um, and in the event of inclement weather, they will reschedule it for us, they're willing to shut down the entire range to all their members for us for the entire day, um, and basically, we can be able to use the, the range for everything that we need in order to qualify.
Mm-hmm.
The reason they need to shut the range down is because we have to have variances from their range restrictions, so that's the reason for the, uh, closing it down for us.
Mm-hmm, no, makes sense, it's close by.
And, you know, it's in our backyard, and it will really cut down on travel time for us.
Sure.
I think it's excellent to do.
You need a motion to approve the agreement, I looked at it, it looks fine.
Okay, everything is fine with the agreement, okay?
Yeah, I think it's an excellent idea, too, I make a motion that, uh, we pursue a letter of agreement with, uh, you know, our solicitor reviewing it for its technicalities.
Uh, second that.
Okay, all in favor of said motion?
Aye.
Three and O. Okay, we're moving pretty quickly here, that's good. Then next, we have a, um, a final package replacement, I'm gonna turn this over to Stephanie, uh, she has been working on this very well.
Yes, this is something that we have had budgeted, um, this is the replacement of our financial software package, um, it is a package that we share with the Doylestown Township Municipal Authority, and we will also share in that, we've had RFPs, um, the lowest quote was from Safe Choice Software Solutions of Wormminster, um, we find this that between sharing the cost of $42,500 with DTMA, find this program to be efficient and effective, um, our program's over 10 years old, and will have local support, and many of our, um, neighboring municipalities also have highly recommended this software. We would recommend that we, um, be able to award the contract and purchase the software from, uh, Safe Choice Software.
Okay, is there a motion to that?
I make a motion, aye, and that we accept it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of said motion?
Aye.
Aye, three and O. Next, we have a road material bid, and I'll turn this over to Dick, John, if you'd like to elaborate on that a little bit.
You have before you a list of, uh, materials that were bid through the Bucks County Consortium on behalf of the communities, and, uh, it is a type of, uh, a bid in which you can break it down and choose a low bidder for the particular materials you wanna buy, and I've listed, I think, up to five, and, uh, would recommend the board approve those as they are presented to you in the memo.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of said motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Three and O. Okay, now, we're moving into some land development subdivisions.
Um, the first item is, um, under our ordinance, anyone who converts to a commercial use in the C1 zoning district has to secure a permit from the township related to that, and the application tonight relates to what we know is the Koranski property, which is the, I think, six or seven acre property behind the gas station at 611 and Edison-Furlong Road, that has the large stone barn and, and stone house that sits off the road, and it relates to that particular property. You have seen the correspondence from my neighbor, Marty Harrison, you've also seen the comments from the Planning Commission, and Mr. Marty is here on behalf of the applicant to advise the board as to what's involved with this application and what he is seeking to achieve this evening.
Good evening, I'm here tonight with Tom McGrath, uh, Tom is the, uh, excuse me, the sole member of Byberry Properties, the entity that is purchasing real estate, and he also is the owner of McBrick Building Group, the tenant, so to speak, at the property, the ten, hopefully, the tenant to be at the property. Um, as Mr. Garten said, we're here for a zoning permit. This is in a commercial zoning district, um, we, um, our uses clearly fit under, uh, within the permitted uses, or uses by right in this commercial zoning district. We appeared before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission had no problem with our proposed use, attached no conditions or recommend, or made no recommendations other than to approve it. Um, this McBrick Company, uh, by the way, did everyone get a copy of the letter I sent Stephanie and the enclosures and the plans? I'll be glad to go through all that, but I also don't wanna waste your time by doing that. Basically, it's a, a little over five acres, the site, uh, McBrick Company, uh, Building Group, or McBrick Building Group is a, uh, a contractor, a general contractor, uh, they're not a site contractor, they don't have a lot of equipment, they have one backhoe, they've got two trailers, uh, and they're like landscaping trailers, they aren't even big enough to haul the backhoe. Um, they have some snowplow blades, they're gonna be, uh, the pool area, and this is your planner Judy recommended, that the pool area be filled in, uh, if we were gonna abandon it, and, uh, drill holes in the bottom of it, fill it with, uh, stone or ballast, and cover it with a geotech material, um, and use that as, uh, as a seepage pit on the site. Um, as you know, just from driving by, uh, everything runs, it runs downhill from Edison-Furlong Road, the property, um, we plan to do that, we plan to park the, uh, the backhoe and the, uh, two landscape trailers where the pool is, which is a low portion of the property, hidden behind the house, the existing residence, seemed like an ideal solution, um, when we had indicated that's what we were going to do, that's when Judy, uh, suggested making that into a seepage pit, uh, the pool. Um, basically, uh, there's gonna be offices for, uh, McBrick Company Building Group, there'll be three or four people that would be there, let's say, all day, full-time, uh, there'll be more offices than that. There's two superintendents, an estimator, uh, Tom McGrath himself, and they spend very little time in the office, but they need a spot to work, and they're gonna have an office in the building. Uh, they won't be there on a full-time basis, for the most part, they'll be at the job sites. Um, all the materials, um, will be delivered to the job sites, that's just the way they work, um, they aren't seeking to store and double-handle material, there's no need to do it in this day and age. Um, the workers, again, report to the, to the job site, uh, for the most part, uh, Tom uses subcontractors, um, but he has his own men. Uh, one of those men is, uh, is in fact a carpenter, it happens to be, uh, his brother, and he's a master carpenter, and when certain things need to be custom-made, uh, they'll get made, uh, we're planning to put a shop in... be custom-made, they'll get made. We're planning to put a shop in at that portion of the barn, which is the furthest away from Edison Furlong Road. It's what we've been referring to as the garage portion of the barn, and in that will be really what my son, who does woodworking for a hobby, has in his two-car garage, so he can do his woodworking. It's not heavy equipment. In fact, the equipment will be moving out of there that the prior owners had in there, was much larger and much more industrial than anything that we're going to be putting in this lower area. Again, Chuck won't be there on a full-time basis. He'll probably spend at least half of his time at job sites. Chuck is the carpenter... the craftsman carpenter, cabinet maker, let's call him, okay? Although, he doesn't make cabinets. We buy our cabinets from, you know, various cabinet companies, but he would just be doing the custom work on it. The majority of the time, and we've explained this, we've met with Marty Harrison and Don, and the majority of the time, the workshop would only be used from nine to five, and not every night, and not all the time from nine to five. In other words, not all day and not every day, but any work that went on in there would be done between those hours. However, we don't want to be committed to not being able to use it at any other hours. There are occasions when, as Tom told me, look, if I've sold a home and there's a problem, and we've got to get something in the next day, and he's got to make it, he's going to make it. If he has to make it over the weekend, he's going to make it over the weekend. But, again, it's one person and a helper if something was big and too bulky to handle for Chuck, the cabinet maker. The... we've already received a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. We've given that to your zoning officer. We've already received a health department letter indicating that the sanitary sewer system will hold the proposed use and then some for the site. We're adding, I believe it's nine parking spaces. They're... it's on the plan that I provided to you. It's just off the driveway between... it's sort of between the barn and the existing dwelling. The extra seepage pit that the pool's being converted into will more than handle the stone parking spaces. Tom is here, and I'm here to try and answer any questions or concerns that you have. I think we've addressed Marty and Don's concerns while you were all meeting earlier and discussing more important things. Maybe not more important things, but discussing other things. I'll let them speak for themselves. Is there any questions that you have?
Any questions?
Not yet.
I think you've been pretty expressive in what details you've received.
Tried to be. And did everybody get their brochure of what McBrick does and builds? Because I don't know if I had enough when I sent them out. They did?
I don't know that I had.
Okay.
Well, this is just... this is the one they do, the brochure, the financial...
I don't want you to commission out of any work that you've developed.
Remember me when you call.
I will.
Marty, has Mr. Marty correctly analyzed the nature of your conversations during the discussion about the bicentennial?
Oh, was that what I meant?
Yes.
I'll have to read the minutes. I'm Marty Harrison, and my husband, Don Brown, is sitting over there, and we live at 125 Edison Furlong Road, which is directly across from the Karansky property. As the board knows, because I sent you a letter last week, we had some concerns about this switch from a residential property to a commercial property. As anybody on the board who owns a home and anybody in the audience who owns a home can probably understand, we were concerned about how this might affect our property values. In the interim, I've had a chance to talk to Tom, and I've had a chance to talk to Charlie, and we've discussed how we can resolve my concerns about the three issues of dust, sound, and large equipment parked on the property. I had one question of the board, though, and I'm embarrassed that I don't know this, but I don't know this. Does the township have a sound ordinance?
Yes.
Yes. What is it?
It's a noise ordinance, and it has a decibel level at the property line. I can't give it to you off the top of my head, but we do have a noise ordinance.
And are there certain hours that you're loud noise and certain hours you're not?
It's the level of the noise, not the hours.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. In any event, I believe we have resolved all of our issues. I believe that Tom is going to make a wonderful neighbor, and I personally would like to welcome him to the neighborhood.
On that note, I'll make a motion that we approve...
The permit.
The permit. The zoning permit.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of said motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Three and out.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next matter, while Mr. Wild comes up to the podium, has to do with the property we know as the Warrington Country Club property. The application represents as the Ford property, but we know it's the facility at the old Warrington Country Club. They have requested of the supervisors that you agree to waive land development for this application, and that was discussed with the planning commission. I believe the planning commission supported the grant of the waiver. If the board was inclined to agree, I have several conditions that would be affixed to that decision, but I believe Mr. Wild would like to at least have his client give you a brief presentation, also raising an issue about the bike path, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Garten. Members of the board, good evening. I have the pleasure of representing Wayne Ford. Wayne's in the front row here to my left. He is the principal in Pinkford LLC. Wayne has had a long history in catering and is a principal in Romano's Catering at a different location. He has acquired the interest in the Warrington Country Club and is interested in upgrading the facility and changing its culture and its appearance and making it a much nicer and former user-friendly place to be. To Wayne's left is Mike Bukey. Mike is with Showalter and Associates and prepared the plans. I don't want to belabor why we're here, but we went to the planning commission, as you heard. We also had the ability to receive the township professional consulting reviews from your planner and your engineer and your traffic consultant. I'm pleased to say that, as you would expect for a disturbance that's as minor as we think this is, there really are not any, what I would consider traditional land development issues. Mike has behind me the plan that he colored up. I think we all recognize and know this is the Warrington Country Club. Before the David Cutler group came through in the, I think it was the mid to late 80s, and developed the greens of Warrington around that, the banquet facility stayed. You can see that colored in the middle. It enters through a circular drive, and there is an existing parking area. There are virtually no disturbance issues with respect to that. What is proposed is an addition here on the sod. It's about 90 feet. I shouldn't say about. It is 90 feet by 30 feet, and it is not adding any additional impervious. Some of the impervious that's extra in the back of the property is being removed, and the facility is not intended to add any additional sit-down seating. It's designed primarily to be a bar, a buffet line, and really designed to change the way the circulation works inside the Warrington Country Club so that it's, as we said, more user-friendly. There are a couple of photographs of...
You need it out of white, I think.
I do, yeah. Well, maybe I have one. Our version, anyway. That's a concept photo of what it's going to look like. You can see that addition will be added here, and it is going to look like this on the inside. This is a concept of the bar area and what would be the area used for buffet. The back wall that would be near the residential neighborhood, or nearest residential neighborhood, will be solid and not have windows in it. The other two sides, as you see, will be glass. Here's another photographic rendering of what it may look like on the inside, and I think Wayne is anxious to get started. He takes over the operation momentarily. We did ask at the planning commission that they favorably consider a recommendation to waive land development. The disturbance works out to be something like 1% or 1.5% of the overall area of the property. The property's about 4.2 acres, and the 90 by 30 square foot addition is about 2,800 square feet, give or take, so not much more than a Florida room might be at your house, if you had a large house. We're adding a nice Florida addition. We did go to the zoning hearing board last evening. We needed two items to be addressed. One was a special exception. Since the property is zoned C2 commercial, the E18 banquet facility use in the C2 district is not a use that the district permits, and so when it became C2, the E18 banquet facility is a holdover or leftover use from when it was the Warrington Country Club. Any expansion of the use as a non-conforming use required a special exception. I'm pleased to say the zoning hearing board recognized that there was no health, safety, welfare impact, no violation of any of the conditions related to a special exception, and granted the approval. The other issue that we appeared before the board on related potentially to the parking, when we filed the application, it was a little unclear to us whether there was any parking relief that may be needed. There are 136 parking spaces there now. When we're done, there's going to be 136 parking spaces, but there's going to be some minor tweaking to the parking area. Presently, there are only two handicapped spaces. Based on the square footage, the township review noted the need for five handicapped spaces, so we are adding three, converting three spaces more or less to handicapped spaces so that we keep the 136 spaces. I think the zoning hearing board recognized that the parking requirement either was not applicable to the E18 use or otherwise was non-conforming, so we needed no relief on the parking. The only thing that required relief was the granting of the special exception. So, the zoning hearing board did grant that. Several neighbors appeared. Nobody opposed the application. In fact, I would say the... of the neighbors that appeared, I think it's fair to say they were supportive of the application and wish Wayne luck to renovate the building and are looking forward to it being upgraded.
What about the bike path?
To the extent that there is a requirement in the land development ordinance, we did ask that you consider a waiver. There is existing sidewalk on Alms House Road. We think the sidewalk is in lieu of the bike path or satisfies the bike path requirement. In addition, there is no other surrounding bike path on either side. As you know, the shopping center is up at 611, and then it becomes residential as you hit the eastern side of the property. So, to the extent there's any waivers, if you were to waive land development, I think it's a general will comply with all of the reviews. How you view whether there's a bike path requirement or not, if there is, in fact, a bike path requirement not satisfied or addressed, met by the sidewalk, then the waiver would include a request that you favorably consider waiving any bike path requirement.
What's the board's feeling about the bike path, knowing the fact there is a sidewalk there, and you really can't go anywhere with it, because you know it goes way up the hill there?
There's nowhere to go. I mean, it's not like we have a continual bike path that it would connect to, so I don't see any reason.
That is consensus. The board was inclined to waive land development, be subject to the following conditions: compliance with Boucher &amp; James report dated February 21, 2012; compliance with the Pickering Courts and Somerson report dated February 13, 2012; compliance with the decision of the zoning hearing board, descend any conditions are imposed; next receipt of all permits and approvals, my agents having jurisdiction, including the Bucks County Conservation District; payment of all township expenses, including professional services related to the application; applicant executed waiver of land development agreement, the form satisfactory to manager and myself; and lastly, that no bike path be required. Mr. Wild, do you agree to those conditions?
That we do.
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive... waive the fees?
Waive the land development.
And I'll second that, and I just one question. Does that preclude... I'll ask the solicitor, if that precludes the applicant from making a donation to bike and hike paths other areas of the township, as we're always trying to?
Well, the trouble is, he already has a sidewalk already there. It's not like you're not waiving any improvement, so it would be hard to get a fee in lieu when there's already...
So, it would have to be out of the goodness of its heart.
Right.
How far up does the sidewalk go through the property? Does it go all the way to the end? End to end of the property, so it meets up with the sidewalk coming from the estates Warrington?
Yes.
Yeah, because there's bike path and sidewalk on the other side where the greens are, and it takes you down to the shopping center. So, as long as people have ability to walk and traverse pedestrian or bicycle coming down from the estates, which it sounds like they do across the property, that would make sense.
That is a dangerous road. There is...
You're not going to go up Alms House Road on that particular stretch, because they'd be coming down 100 miles an hour if they were on bicycles.
Yep, I would say so. Well, I call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three and out.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is Eastburn Track. I understand that has been taken off for this evening.
That's correct.
We do have, I guess, March 31st. It's expired. Do we have to expand the...
Yeah, they did send us a...
Prove the extension to...
To April 30th.
April 30th.
I make a motion, we accept their extension to April 30th for the Eastburn Track.
I'll second that.
Okay. Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three and out. Okay. Now, next, we have the treasures report.
I make a motion, we approve the treasures report, March 20th, 2012.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three and out. Next, we have the bills list.
Make a motion, we approve the bills list, March 20th, 2012.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of said motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Three and out. Next, we have the announcements, which next dated meeting, the board of supervisors is scheduled for Tuesday, April 3, 2012, which would be here, and the annual Doylestown Township Golf outing will be held on June 4, 2012, at Doylestown Country Club. So, get your reservations in now and get your clubs cleaned up, and hope to see you all there. So, with that, I call for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.